The hour of convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order. This time, I'd like to ask that all unauthorized persons exit this beautiful chamber. It's my distinct honor to recognize the all-powerful, world's greatest Braves fan, the Senator from the 53rd.
Good morning, Mr. President. It's such a glorious day here at our state capitol, even though it's raining and traffic is bad and I was late getting here. But other than that, it's a great day. Thank you for your leadership on behalf of the people of Georgia and we appreciate your steady hand on this body. Excuse me. The Journal's been read and found to be correct, Mr. President.
Let me get this straight. You were late?
Over there.
Oh, okay. I thought your apartment's only like a half a block from here. Is there objection with dispensing of the reading of the Journal? The Chair hears none. The reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. Mr. Secretary, will you please read a message from the House?
Following message was received from the House through Mr. Riley, the clerk thereof. Mr. President, the House is adopted by the requisite constitutional majority. The following resolution of the House and Senate, H.R. 1 E X by Representative Burns 159th and others, a resolution to notify the Senate that the House of Representatives has convened. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, first reading of Senate bills and resolutions, please.
Senate Bill 3 E X by Senator Butler the 55th and others, a bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and the number of congressional districts to provide for a short title-
Reapportionment and redistricting.
Senate Bill 4 E X by Senator Butler the 55th and others, a bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of state senatorial districts to provide for a short title-
Reapportionment and redistricting.
S.R. 4 E X by Senator Mullis of the 53rd and others, a resolution recognizing and committing the Atlanta Braves and for other purposes.
Rules.
Senate Resolution 5 E X by Senator Dixon of the 45th and others, a resolution ratifying Governor Brian P. Kemp's executive order numbers 5.10-
Finance.
Senate Resolution 4 E X by Senator Mullis of the 53rd and others, a- Did I read that one? That completes the order, Mr. President.
The Senate has received a communication from the Governor requesting that his appointments to the various agencies, boards, and commissions be confirmed by this body. The Secretary will read that communication.
Date November 3rd, 2021, to Secretary of the Senate David Cook. Dear Secretary Cook, attached is a list of appointments to various boards, commissions, and authorities and other entities requiring Senate confirmation. This list is submitted pursuant to Senate Rule 3-3.1 at Sec. If we can provide you with additional information to assist your office in the confirmation process, please let us know. Thank you for your assistance. Sincerely, Brian P. Kemp, Governor, State of Georgia. The list of appointments are contained in a list on your desk.
Those Governor's appointments are now referred to the Committee on Assignments. All right, it's now time for our morning roll call. It's now time for morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair recognizes his good friend, the Senator from the 33rd.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 38th, 36th, and that's all, sir. Thank you.
Shortlist today without objection, the Senators from the 38th and 36th are excused. Are there- Chair recognizes the Senator from the 10th.
Good morning, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 2nd.
Without objection, the Senator from the 2nd is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 44th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 43rd.
Without objection, the Senator from the 43rd is excused. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 3rd.
Without objection, the Senator from the 3rd is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 40th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 55th and the 42nd.
Without objection, the Senators from the 55th and 42nd are excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 47th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Said with unanimous consent, I would ask that you be excused, the Senator from the 5th, if he's not already been excused.
Without objection, the Senator from the 5th is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from Forsyth County.
I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 21st.
21st?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, the Senator from the 21st is excused. Secretary will call the role of Senators. Signify your presence by voting the a switch. The Secretary will unlock the machine. All right, it's now time for our morning devotional and I'd ask that all Senators please take your seats, cease all audible conversations, and ask that the doorkeeper secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to call upon our Majority Leader to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us a very special chaplain of the day.
Y'all would stand and join me in the pledge to our national flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, liberal, representative, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with the end of justice for all.
Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, and moderation.
It's my honor to introduce our chaplain of the day. She had to come very, very far from like back there to come up and get our day started in the right manner. Now, the good Senator and I had a chance to get to know each other really for the first time last year during regular session and I have found her to be deeply passionate about her constituents from the Stone Mountain area and deeply grounded in her faith. So it is my honor to introduce our chaplain of the day, the Senator from the 41st.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, to the Majority Leader. I am so grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you all, my colleagues, this day. I won't hold you long, I can promise you that because I know I have to talk to y'all later. So let me just begin. I want to begin with a story. So many of you know I have several dozen chickens and fowl of some sorts on my property and over the years that I've been farming them, I've been watching their habits. Every spring, we integrate some new hens into our flock to continue to expand it and I watch how the whole process works. Now, you know, we talk about there being a pecking order and it's true. Among hens, there is a pecking order, but what I've learned is that anytime we introduce new hens, they always find a way to make more room on the perch for the new hens. Now, it takes a week or so and there's some jockeying, positioning, but over the time, we see that what we thought was kind of a determined ranking order, it shifts. It changes as more hens are integrated into the flock. But last year, I tried a new experiment. We had two roosters already, Hercules and Pretty Ricky, and they already had their hens that they fertilized, I mean protected, designated hens, right? So when I introduced John Henry into the flock, this new rooster, I wasn't quite sure how it was going to work out because they'd already kind of made their decisions. And so I watched as the process unfolded and John Henry tried to protect some new hens and Hercules would come in and say, "No, no, no, that's not acceptable." So he'd go and try to protect some other hens and Pretty Ricky would have something to say about it. So finally, John Henry found his way into the hen house where he set up shop. Don't you know every hen has to come to the hen house to lay their egg, right? So that's where he found his house. He just reigned in that space protecting those chickens and also thankfully to me, making sure he killed any snakes that came in to take the eggs. What I learned from that is that we have the capacity, at least our chickens have the capacity, to figure out ways to make room for everyone that's out there. It takes some jockeying and it takes some time, but eventually people find their space or chickens at least find their place where they can have something to say, something to contribute. Some of you are thinking that I'm talking about redistricting and how we draw map lines, but that's not what I'm here to talk about. I do that from down there. I'm here to talk about how we as a body and as people who are citizens of this great state have a responsibility to behave like chickens, finding a way for everybody to have a place in the community that works for them, a space where they can thrive. You see, John Henry, he wasn't going to be the best one to be out there in the field with the rest of them, but they made a space for him, a space where he could do his job, where he could really flourish. And so I'm calling on you all, wherever you are, that you would find the young person in your district who was really struggling to find his place in life and that you would use your power to help make a space for him. We have a responsibility, whether it's to Brother Ashley who sleeps outside on the sidewalk out there, or maybe it's your brother or your sister, we have a responsibility to make space for each other, to make sure that everybody can have an opportunity to eat from some food, to have an opportunity to have a place to sleep. We have a responsibility to make sure that every Georgian citizen has an opportunity to spread their wings and fly to the best of their capabilities. So I urge you, my friends, please do your part to make space so that everybody can fly. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you so much thanks for the opportunity to gather with one another, for the opportunity to consider how to best serve the people of Georgia. We pray for every person in this state, for those who work, who play, and worship. We ask God that you would help us to make good decisions on their behalf so that everybody might have an opportunity to thrive, to grow, and to fly to their highest potential in this state. Amen.
All right, the Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair sees none. Does any Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 24th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just come to the well today and I want to thank each and every one of you for all your prayers and ludders for the loss of my brother in this past month. And I just want to thank y'all. I love each and every one of you. Y'all don't know how much it meant to me to see some of you at the visitation, to see the flowers that y'all sent and all the cards I read and all the prayers if y'all giving up to the Lord for us. The main thing, y'all, always remember, He's home and we not. So let's do our job here on the good earth so we can meet Him up there one day. A lot of y'all already met Him before. He was the pastor of the day that I've had here before. Thank y'all. Love y'all.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the Minority Leader for a point of personal privilege. Chair recognizes the Minority Leader for a point of personal privilege. She waves. Good to see you. No wonder why you look surprised. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 34th for a point of personal privilege.
I rise to start by saying when my daughter grew up watching Monica Kaufman on TV, seeing someone that looked like her. These days, my granddaughter watched Jovita Moore, again, watching somebody that looks like her. Some of you may remember, I recognized Monica when she retired and many of you may recall that you signed the resolution. I requested this resolution for Jovita when I first learned she was battling brain cancer. And I wanted to go ahead and read it today. My intentions are to go to her viewing and leave it, so if any of you want to sign it, you're more than welcome to. This is personal to me because going to a national convention was something I had never done. And while there, when the 44th was being recognized and all, it was magical times for me. And Jovita pulled me to the side and said, "I want to get you on camera for back home." And we built a friendship that is everlasting in my heart. Jovita has a long and consistent record of service to the community and this state and has been recognized as one of the most dynamic and committed news professionals in Georgia. And whereas Jovita currently anchors, currently then, anchored the 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM newscasts on Channel 2 Action News, where she has long been recognized for her expertise and dedication to the highest standard of journalistic integrity and ethics. And whereas an industry professional with much experience, her previous station included W M C TV in Memphis, Tennessee, as well as K F S M in Fayetteville and Fort Smith, Arkansas, where she has earned several Emmy Awards during her years at W S B TV. And in 2017, she was honored by the National Academy of TV Arts and Science Southeast Chapter with an Introduction Into the Silver Circle, one of its most prestigious awards. And whereas alongside her work as a journalist, she donated countless hours to civic organizations and nonprofit entities across metro Atlanta. And whereas as future testament to her dedication to service, Jovita served as a member of the Atlanta Association of Black Journalists and the National Association of Black Journalists. And whereas it is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishment to this extraordinary individual be appropriately recognized, therefore be it resolved that Jovita Moore is commended for her many wonderful accomplishment as a news professional and extended best wishes for her family in the future. I could not have ordered it and not had an opportunity to give it, but I did want her family to know it was done. And I wanted Atlanta, all of Georgian, to know what a loss it has been for me personally and my family because when she learned who my son was, he said, the first thing she said was, "You're Vincent C.? Are you related to the Senator?" And he said, "Mother, I can't go anywhere without folk making sure they know that I am your son." Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I'll yield the will and I'll leave it up front in case anybody wants to join for a signature.
Thank you, Senator, for that great reflection. Does any of the Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The Chair sees none. At this time, I'd like to call forward the Senator from the 39th to introduce to us the Doctor of the Day.
Good morning, everybody. I am really excited to be able to introduce our Doctor of the Day, Vandana Reddy. Dr. Reddy is the founder and CEO of Northeast Georgia Optomology. We both spent time in Massachusetts and she is actually a classmate of our very own Senator from the 48th District. She attended Wellesley College, which is an all-women's college near Boston, Massachusetts, and earned a degree in neuroscience with honors. She then went on to earn her medical degree from the Medical College of Georgia with A O A honors and completed her ophthalmology training at the world-renowned Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. She then went on to complete a subspecialty surgical fellowship in cornea, external disease, and cataract refractive surgery at the University of Michigan Kellogg Eye Center in Ann Arbor, Michigan. She's a member of the American Academy of Ophthalmology, the Georgia Society of Ophthalmology, the Medical Association of Georgia, and Women in Ophthalmology. Dr. Reddy is passionate about providing and developing great patient relationships and she strives in providing excellent medical and surgical care. In her community service, she performs free glaucoma screening clinics in the Atlanta area and strongly advocates for patients at all levels of care. She is a Georgia native. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends. She loves to travel in the USA and abroad so she can absorb all the different cultures and particularly the food, so she is a foodie and I know many of us, judging by our sizes, are as well. She has been passionately learning a type of Indian classical dance called Koochi Pooti since she was eight years old and she still actively performs. I hope you won't need her services today, but if you do, she will be ready to serve you. Dr. Reddy.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be Doctor of the Day. You guys know where to find me. Hopefully you won't need my services, but please come find me if you need anything. Thank you.
All right, the Senate will come back to order as we move on. Mr. Secretary, will you please read H.R. 2 E X for us?
House Resolution 2 E X by Representative Burns of the 159th and Hatchet of the 150th, a resolution relative to meetings and adjournments of the General Assembly and for other purposes. Part 1, be it resolved by the General Assembly of Georgia that unless otherwise provided by subsequent resolution of the General Assembly, the General Assembly shall adjourn at the close of the legislative day on Friday, November 5th, 2021, and shall reconvene on Monday, November 8th, 2021. Be it further resolved that on or after Monday, November 8th, 2021, the periods of adjournment of the 2021 special session, if any, shall be specified by subsequent resolution of the General Assembly, provided however that unless otherwise specified by subsequent resolution, the General Assembly shall be in adjournment on each Saturday and Sunday. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Majority Whip to present House Resolution 2 E X.
Sorry, I was late. I've taken over-
You don't look like the Majority Whip.
I know.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader to present House Resolution 2 E X.
This is the resolution I talked to y'all about yesterday, the adjournment resolution that we have. All it says is because we don't have a date fixed to end, we're going to be technically in session. to be technically in session yesterday, today, tomorrow, adjourn tomorrow, reconvene on Monday, and then every Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So five days a week. The days that we will not be in session are Saturdays and Sundays. There is no end date. So remember, we talked about this yesterday with the with the special rules. We'd said there was no end date. So be prepared to be in five days a week until we get our jobs done. Subject to your questions.
You have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the resolution? Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader again for a very important motion.
Are we there? Wow. Thank you, Mr. President. I moved that the Senate stand adjourned until ten A M. on Friday, five, November twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Secretary, are there any announcements?
Rules Committee meeting scheduled for today has been canceled. Reaportment and redistricting committee will meet in room four fifty at one o'clock P M. The Senate State and Local Government Operations Committee will meet in room three oh seven C L O B. at two o'clock. The Senate Study Committee on Violence Against Healthcare Workers will meet in room three ten at three o'clock P M. this afternoon. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Does any other Senators have an additional announcement? The chair sees none. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Friday, November fifth, twenty twenty-one, at ten A M. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the Senate stands adjourned. Thank you.